Welcome. Before we start, if anyone who has a cellphone, please put it in silent mode. Appreciate it. Thank you. Let's stand. Do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mary Ann, could you do the roll call?
Here.
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 Here. All right. We have a whole array of recognitions we should get to.
We have someone that wants to shake hands.
Who wants? You want to get up there and shake hands with everyone?
You both can go if you want.
All right. You want to go? I'll try your foot thick now so you can get up there, right? Oh, no.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
What we'd ask is, I'm going to read the names and then we ask people to come up and whichever team you're with, you might want to stay until all your teammates are here or group if it's other than sport. But if you'll hold your applause, we get to the end of each team, okay, if you don't mind. So the first, we'd like to recognize the following 2018 spring athletes for Special Olympics track. State qualifiers, Julia Valerio, participants, Sagida Kuplinskass, Marissa Bloodgood, Eileen Chaconi, Colleen Mead, Alyssa Lozada, Michelle Alrie, Erin Torres, Alexander Lang. I'm sorry, am I going too fast?
A little quick.
Sorry.
Stay up here, okay, buddy?
Nicholas Logis and Sean Spera. All right, let's give a... The next team we'd like to recognize is the badminton team. All-conference athlete Haley Pasker. All-academic athletes Zoe Jaquat, Natalie Lyle, Samantha Bitzer, Olivia Dickinson, Destiny Herrera, Isabel Hughes, Jane McLaren, Abigail Swiatek, Grace Taber.
Anybody from badminton? Consider it from badminton.
Next will be baseball. All-conference athlete, all-academic athlete, MSC MVP Ryan Sirmak. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes Jared Torina and John Costner. All-conference athlete Michael Schicker. All-academic athletes Pablo Hernandez, Jacob Garvey, Jeremy Hare, Casey Valetta, Harrison Bear, Samuel Gravetti, Griffin Jordan, Joseph Kawicki, William Corslund, and Nathan Roberto. Kristen, were all badminton members by any chance that walked in?
I don't know.
All right, we'll wait till the end, then.
Michelle's walking across. She's coming. We can stop when she comes.
Okay. Should I wait? Should I go?
Right there. Michelle, we already announced your name. Come on up. It's okay, we'll say it again.
I'll say it again. Special Olympic track participant is it Michelle Alrie?
Yep.
Michelle Alrie.
Michelle.
Good job.
Good job.
Is this Amy in the back?
Just by your hand.
Griffin Jordan. And Griffin's from baseball, right?
All right, we'll read this again. Hold on. Griffin Jordan, baseball, all-academic athlete. Congratulations. So we're going to move on to girls soccer. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes Taylor Jurgens, Allison Cuchara, Grace Larson, Mazzy Marcucci, and Evelyn Roth. All-academic athletes Sofia Deforti, Emily Graham, Taylor Koziac, Emma Pizana, Kathy Pribil-Pirdanak, Radislava Pribil-Pirdanak, Megan Reardon, Claire Swiatek, Gabrielle Tarrant, Maura Ford, and Abigail Higgins. Get them. Next is softball. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes Lauren Lambrus and Kalen Niggo. All-conference athlete Emily Noel. All-academic athletes Victoria Blood, Nora DeChoda, Elise Mitchell, Nadia Rineiri, Abigail Favela, Gillian Gaines, Bailey Hastings, and Peyton Rangel. Let's give a hand for softball. Next we'll do boys tennis. All-academic athletes William Dowling, Jackson Hager, Joseph Kinnon, Rowan Elwart, Bruno Kiskowski, Rokus Lukasaviches, Eric Robertson, and Neil Sticks. Let's give a hand for tennis. Next is girls track and field. All-conference athlete, all-academic athlete, state qualifier in the discus Isabel Montefanese. All-conference athlete, all-academic athlete Sylvia Harvin. All-conference athlete Tara Janney. All-academic athletes Liliana Enda Doblo, Emma Forberg, Alexis Garcia, Haley Jurgens, Nadia Kazmers, Mary Coburn, Cora Lutz, Melissa Olivera. Liz?
Olivera Liz.
I'm sorry, Olivera Liz. Immaneek Coleman, Emma Fortman, Brenna Loftus, Gabrielle Nolan, Brianna Rodriguez, and Anisia Taylor. Let's give a hand for girls track. Next we'll do boys water polo. All-sectional athlete, all-academic athlete Charles Roebling. All-academic athletes Jillius Alexa, Maxie Milano Alvarez, Peter Bartman, William Briolet, Justin Herman, Nicholas Gora, and Matthew Harder. Next we'll move on to boys track and field. State qualifiers Jason Noel, Miles Rubio, and Brendan Chaika. Did I go too fast?
Are you okay?
Okay. State qualifiers, all-conference athletes, all-academic athletes Jacob Guadzala, George Servanka, Christopher... He's here? George, come on.
Pardon?
Christopher Magno and Jack Sagan. State qualifier, all-conference athlete Devon Moody. State qualifiers, all-academic athletes Joshua Raff, David Keane. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes Ethan Clarkson, Michael Pitts, and Connor Raymond. All-conference athletes Corey Dishman, Christopher Doherty, Sean Girola, Ethan Holmes... Sorry, I didn't mean to go so fast. Josh Warren and Connor O'Brien. And all-academic athlete Archer Turan.
Boys track?
Kristen, do we have to go back?
Girls track?
Anisa Taylor.
Who did I?
Anisa Taylor.
No, she came in, huh?
Which sport?
Girls track.
Girls what?
Girls track.
Girls track. All-academic athletes.
I'll find it here.
Last name.
Okay. All-academic athlete Anisha Taylor. Now, boys volleyball. The MVP was Jason Bageness?
Vajanas.
Vajanas, I'm sorry. And all-academic athletes Matthew Hanson, Robert Holbeck, Matthew Lambs, Jonah Wraith, and Lucas Riley. And our last group, certainly not our least important, girls water polo. All-state athlete, all-sectional athlete, all-academic athlete Tatum Bruno. All-sectional athletes, all-academic athletes Chloe Wandel Morello and Leah Harason. And all-academic athletes Maria Elarcon, Shay Connolly, Michelle Jacobs, Sarah Peluski, Autumn Reshovich Schwerer, Abigail Regan, Alyssa Schwartz, Veronica Caravo, Michaela Esposito, and Claire Kawicki. Kristen, then a couple other young ladies coming after we start. Did everybody get recognized as here? Did you get to get your certificate? It came in late.
What about on the outside on the side? Todd is the landmark coach of the year or something like that?
He was received an award for the female coach of the year. Yeah, we'll recognize him in July. We just got that last week.
Okay, do we want to...
This is not... If parents that are just here for the recognition, this is a good time if you want to step out. We're going to be talking about lacrosse in a few minutes. We have a few minor reports to get through, but if you're here just for recognition, this is a good time to run. Unless you want to stay, you're always welcome.
All right, we... It's time for reports. Our section of presidents report, I have nothing to report on. Superintendent's report.
Curriculum advisory met at the end of May to just review the summer work and a summary of that summer work that will address some of the life safety issues is in the board packet tonight under the CFO's report and the quality report from Errormark Finance Advisory Council. There were a few minor tweaks to the tentative budget. Scott will address those tonight before we approve the tentative budget. No update on personnel advisory and no update on policy advisory. A first read of press packet 98 was included in the packet, but the policy council will probably first meet next month.
Okay. Principals' report.
Summer athletic camps are up and running along with our summer academic opportunities. Last week, our first session of summer school started and we had, in addition to that, we also had 24 future senior students come to Camp College to start their college application process. And we had about 65 incoming freshmen come to participate in the Bridge to RB workshop. That's a great opportunity for them to come and meet a variety of different staff and different students and get acquainted with the building as a whole and meet students from other feeder schools. A full report on summer school will be shared out at our August board meeting. Residency sign of information was just emailed out to all families last week, and many families have already started to sign up for one of our three appointment slots. Our website also has additional information regarding the required documents that are needed for our annual residency event, and those dates for our event are July 12th, 18th, and 24th, from 12:15 to 8 by appointment. Next, under the principals' report, we have two reports. The first of two reports is the lacrosse report that will be given by Dave Mannan, Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, and Tom Doeman, Former Assistant Principal of Athletics. And after completing a second year of, as a probationary lacrosse club with volunteer sponsors at RB, the building administration is here tonight to present a proposal for the board's consideration to make the lacrosse club an RB sport and a JV sport for the spring of 2019. So the report begins on page 16 of Board Book, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Dave and Tom.
And just so the audience is aware, this is a first presentation the board's receiving about establishing an official lacrosse program at Riverside Brookfield High School. There will be no vote taken tonight since it has to be on the agenda for 48 hours as a voting item, as a new business item. So this will take some time over the summer. Our next meeting will be in July. If the board chooses to vote on it, earliest it can be voted on will be in July.
All right, thank you, Kristen. As Kristen stated, we're here to propose the lacrosse club integrating into a sport. So within that, a little bit of the background was given already, but I do want to mention that the lacrosse club was established in 2016 out of interest from many of the students in this room today. It was approved as an activity in the fall of 2016 through the help of the volunteers and fundraising. We're able to get off the ground and have our first season, inaugural season, in the spring of 2017 of the lacrosse program. This may completed its second full season as a school-sponsored probationary club in its hopes of becoming an adopted junior varsity at IHSA sport for the 19th season. A little bit of a background about lacrosse and the IHSA. It was adopted within the state series this spring, 2018, for boys, both boys and girls. Currently, participation in the state are 83 boys teams and 59 girl teams. The boys, player information, there are 10 players on the field at all times. Girls, 12. It's a little bit of a different game. And going into our participation numbers here within the past two years, spring of 2017, we had 22 boys on the team. We had 14 girls. Number jumped up in 18 to 40 boys and 15 girls. Our competition schedule, boys played eight games in 17, and the girls played eight as well. However, some of those got canceled, so I think they ended up with three or four. The spring of this year, the boys played 10 games, the girls played six. Some of our opponents included Lake Forest, Andiak Fenwick, Hinsdale, so some of our surrounding schools in the area. The girls, Geneva, Hampshire, they traveled up west and north, Glenbard West, Hinsdale Central, Marist. We did send out an activity survey at the end of the year to all of our students in the school, and of the respondents, 168 said they would be interested if lacrosse became an IHSA sport at RB. A couple of reasons for that, you know, there is more of a presence, as you see here in the room tonight. Lacrosse is out there. It's an emerging sport in the state, and the participation numbers are there across many schools and they're rising. So that's one. Two, the state series is big for students as well, seeing that it is an adopted IHSA sport. The school would entice some students to come out for that as well. As well as the cost, right now, our students are mainly purchasing their own equipment. We have some equipment that we purchased for them, but their sticks, you know, their gloves for the boys, the helmets, the pads. It is a costly sport. We've, you know, been lucky to fundraise a little bit and get a couple of community donations that has helped the program out here. So we're able to buy some sets, some kits, some competition kits. We're able to provide some sticks, some goggles, almost all goggles for the girls team. For the boys, the protective gear, we... The boys are equipped. Every boy needs to wear a helmet. Girls, they wear goggles. All the boys need to wear shoulder pads. They wear armpads, gloves. And so some of that, we've been able to purchase, but it is expensive. So on top of the equipment costs and just participating, so we're able to cover transportation costs and administrative costs, you know, it's expensive. So becoming an IHSA sport, if the school approves this, then it would cut down a little bit on the associated costs for each family.
Explain that. Costs the same amount of money, I assume, to run a team next year as it did last year, so why are you saying it's less of a cost for the families? You mean the school is going to pay for more of it?
Yes. So looking at, if we want to move into the next page there, it's 20. The proposal is to approve two-page, two-paid coaches, one for the girls team, one for the boys team, and they would be competing on a JV level for the next two seasons. And then we'd review the status there and declare varsity designation after that to see where we're at with participation numbers, to make sure we can sustain where we're at currently with numbers. Lacrosse program, again, would declare a junior varsity participation level. The district would adopt transportation costs, operation protective equipment costs. Protective equipment costs for the boys, again, are the shoulder pads, the helmet, the gloves, the armpit. The... For the girls team would be the goggles. So sticks, things like that, helmets. Helmets would be considered a protective item, but mainly the sticks would be purchased for each student on their own. Again, we'll gauge our participation operating cost for the next two years. And then currently, there's 8,376 in lacrosse activity count, and that would be used to offset some of the costs and turned over to the district if approved.
Before we jump into the cost, the one thing that we're asking for is to declare IHSA eligibility to compete at the JV level. So one of the other reasons why the schedule for the girls was six and boys was only 10, two, not only cost for transportation and officials, but we had a very hard time finding other schools that would play us because we weren't considered in IHSA organization or sport, and other schools were. So those schools were looking to play primarily other schools with that designation.
Go back to the, on the boys page. You know, in our preliminary discussions under equipment expenditures... Yeah, I'm sorry, Mary Ann, page 21. You had talked about, for the boys, they were armpads, gloves. So the helmets, because of the concussions, and the shoulder pads, which are two things that we provide similar to football. But lacrosse is kind of like baseball in that most kids bring their own bats, or they have their own glove if they play first base, maybe they buy it. So I mean, is there a way where we can provide the... It looks like on your report, it kind of contradicts what you've mentioned. It looks on the report, you're asking for the board to pay for the shoulder pads and helmets, but I don't see a mention about the sticks or gloves or that. Are you assuming then that students would buy their own, just like we do for kind of baseball?
That is normally what schools have done in, you know, sports like softball, baseball, any tennis, badminton, any, anything they're usually holding a racket or something, a golf club, that's purchased by the individual and their families for the field things. And so that's typical of all high schools, I think, and most sports that have related.
So tennis, but we don't provide tennis rackets?
No, we do have some for badminton and tennis, like a few for beginners that maybe come in that are completely novice, but that's very rare. They usually immediately channel their own rackets, and obviously softball and baseball have had bats for years.
And so the logic of the helmets and shoulder pads, though, is the conditioning and the liability issue to make sure that everybody's playing with a concussion-safe helmet?
Yeah.
So there's some consistency.
Most of the schools that we surveyed were either, obviously, checking helmets and shoulder pads at the end and looking to see where they were repairing and then moving forward. So that was the most common thread, was that they were providing resources for those safety issues that they weren't, they didn't want to leave alone to the individual families because they weren't sure which helmets they may buy.
Is there any reason why girls don't have to wear helmets on your list?
Well, the game is...
Is it oversight or girls...
No, no. The game is different. It's a less physical. There's different rules to it. The stick is not used in a similar fashion.
They wear goggles.
I don't know anything about it.
They wear goggles.
I wanted to talk about that because I don't necessarily agree with that. What is, I mean, what is the future of the sport? It seems to me like girls aren't going to helmets. It's the fit, largest concussion sport of all sports. Women's lacrosse, you know, behind hockey and football.
I mean...
And boys lacrosse.
It could go there and maybe it should. It's like, currently, it's not that way.
The state of Florida went there, right?
I'm not sure about that.
I think Brown University went that way. I would... I don't want it to be hung up. I'd rather put the money in there than not. If, what are the costs of helmets? And let's talk about that as, as being a leader, right? I mean, I don't want to get into micromanaging the girls lacrosse team. If you don't want to wear helmets, that's, that's something you guys can figure out. But I don't want it to be a cost issue, why we're not wearing helmets, right?
No, it's not a cost issue.
Yeah, well, that's absolutely, I wanted to make that very clear.
And actually, I think if you look under the...
Budget for it.
Yeah, the girls sheet, the page 20, because the only protective gear that they're required to wear is the goggles, we thought that should be the district's expense, similar to the helmet. I mean, so eventually, if it went to helmets, we'd have to eventually somewhere down the line budget that in, but we budgeted in the goggles for now.
We go by what the IHSA's guidance is on this, and since it just was adopted, I think they're still working out some kinks as well. Do know that it's a goalie, though, for the girls team, and we do have complete sets for them. They do wear complete headgear and padding and things like that as well, and we do have those sets already purchased. Same with the boys as well. So the expenditures for students individually would be roughly 175 out of their pocket. That includes sticks, gloves, and armpads. And then, assuming that the district would take on the helmet and the shoulder pads for those protectives. And then we already have 13 helmets purchased. We'd be looking at around 22 to add on. And those are similar to football helmets. They're naturally certified, and those would be resurfaced as needed. We'd probably have a company come and review the status of those, and if they need to be resurfaced, they would bring those on, but three, four years, something like that.
Could you take a step back? If it's declared as a junior varsity, they do allow seniors to play still when you do that, right?
Yes.
So it doesn't matter if there's some juniors.
Correct. And we checked with the IHSA and...
I was asking for a different reason. You said there were 40 players this year. You're only budgeting for 35 sets of equipment for next year. Do you know the number's going to go down next year?
I don't know.
And they're allowed to have 40 players, right?
Yeah.
So why are we budgeting for 35 sets?
Right. You look at the playing time and the amount of students, so maybe we need to cap that number, too.
Okay.
Unless you go to two teams, and then you're going to, you know, expect an additional cost there for equipment.
So for next year, what is our plan? We're going to limit it to 35 players?
That would be expected.
Okay.
Just so that we can get enough players on the field.
Okay.
For the price of, you know...
And you got to address supervision with one coach.
Right. That's one other point is, even with 35 players, is one coach enough coach for a team?
It's a lot to take on.
I don't know if there'd be any other sports that we have one for, except for maybe cross-country. Yeah, cross-country, and sometimes when the water polo was on the bubble, that's what happened when girls water polo moved up in numbers. So, yeah, those are always, you know, as the popularity increases. Also, if the skill level is there and the number of kids does grow, there's an option to play six varsity games in there instead of JV, calling varsies, and you could actually then move to a varsity potential state tournament, you know, qualification, too. So you have some flexibility once you're in and declare on the IHSA site.
And since we haven't checked that box yet to declare IHSA eligibility, we have been playing more of like a freshman-sophomore schedule, and it's been very difficult to schedule these games out. You know, schools see that we're not designated as IHSA, so they're more at not to play us then. They don't want that to count on their official score. They play, it's almost counted as a scrimmage. And so declaring, it will help definitely shore up some games. We're looking at seven home, seven away for both teams next year. And then to your point, for the coaches, we've been fortunate to have some volunteers from the community that came through, and if we could continue that, phenomenal. But we obviously look at adding coaches in the future going forward.
What's the minimum number of girls that you need for a team? So you had 14 two years ago and 15 this year?
Yeah.
What's the minimum that you would need to have a team?
Well, 12 is on the field, but, you know, that's obviously the bare minimum would be 12. But, you know, at 15, there's a lot of sports that carry, you know, sometimes softball teams are at levels of 15 or 14 and are playing. But they only have nine players at a time. Right. But, you know, it's two or three over, but, I mean, that's, they've competed at that level. I think, I think there will be an increase with that just because of the support level. That would be a natural thing, and then have it as a sport. A lot of, I think a lot of students, you know, they have that. A lot of, I think a lot of students, you know, they have that aspiration to be on a sport, and if they haven't made another sport or aren't playing, they will come from maybe another sport. So these won't all be new kids, they won't be, you know, forty new boys and twenty new girls, if that's what we get, they'll be a mixture of some athletes that were on other teams, so that's, that's part of the puzzle, but it will happen.
And the students that are coming up from, you know, two thousand nine to fourteen, it's a seventy percent increase in participation rates in lacrosse program. So our kids aren't here yet, that have been really immersed with this sport. We did a table at our Future Bulldogs Night and inundated with, you know, incoming freshman students that wanna play the sport. So as this word keeps, you know, growing, as, as the program's name gets out there, and we declare, you know, if we declare IHSA eligibility, I think that's gonna help our numbers as well.
When I met with the administration and some representatives from the lacrosse club prior to this board presentation, obviously, you know, as it checks and balances, run through superintendent first and run through principal. The logic that we came upon about bringing this to the board was, starting with the JV level for two years, to, one, we officially, we get in the ISA pipe, IHSA pipeline. But two, we ran two years as a volunteer club. So we thought the next phase, 'cause this is, as your superintendent, being here seven years, this is the first time we've added a brand-new sport under my leadership. And so my thought process with this and with the group that I met with was, okay, they did two years as a volunteer club. So if we did two years as a JV sport, that would, if we had four years of data to show consistent participation, two years at an IHSA level, then two years from now, we can possibly consider adding either a varsity level or, you know, two levels, and the second coach, or continue funding it. If the participation drops significantly, or we had trouble fielding a team, that would be something that we would bring to the board and say, you know, we may consider just leaving it as a JV sport, or, you know, putting it on hiatus for two years, so.
Let me ask you two other, I mean, one concern is, is it really only gonna cost what you're saying here? You know, you're talking about maybe a diversity, maybe another coach, that's another eight thousand dollars or whatever it is for another coach, presumably for the boys. The other problem I have is, what if we don't get, what if we only get ten girls next year? I assume we can't field the team then. Then do we have a Title IX problem, can we add boys and not add girls?
I don't believe it's a Title IX problem, which we're trying to, as long as they, you're soliciting and trying to have it, and it's open for participation, whether or not they come or not is not the determining factor. I went through an LCR investigation, and mainly it's the publication and the information, the availability, it's there. And if they didn't come for some reason, we'd obviously have to keep our communication lines open, keep recruiting, and for lack of a better word, keep trying to promote it.
We talked a little bit about the, having a cut level for the boys. And we have done that with water polo, wrestling, soccer, we added stipends after we showed two years of data where they use a paid coach and a volunteer coach, and they had enough data to show that they could run two separate schedules. The board has added stipends on previously.
Right.
In the past. So that was my logic of going with one and thirty-five, and maybe having a cap, and then having a volunteer assist.
I gotta tell you, that doesn't make sense to me, not to, if you allowed forty, and what if thirty-seven kids, boys, come out, you're gonna cut two, because that's a minor effect on the budget? Why would, does it really make a difference if you're a coach, whether you have thirty-five or forty players?
Well, I think on some, the sports that you're cutting on, like in volleyball and basketball, there's a limited amount of playing spaces. So sometimes keeping extra and extras sounds good on paper, lots of numbers, but you also don't have, they're not getting the attention, so to speak.
Why does the IHSA allow forty players, then? That's what you said in your presentation.
We can have as many as we want.
Oh, I thought it said it was limited to forty somewhere.
Oh, we were doing that for supervision, like maximum supervision.
It was, you could have as many as you want, it's like cross-country, you could have tons of people sitting on the bench, until a state tournament, then it'd limit your amount on the bench, but.
Hey, it says the lacrosse program declares IHSA will be the complete, on junior varsity level, and then for instance, maximum participate for each team will be forty athletes, I just assumed those were tied together to IHSA.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Okay, I got you.
I would love to run two, two teams, but then that's an additional cost, then.
And what, how many players run at a time?
Uh, ten.
Ten, so if you had thirty-five players.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to keep those, you know, thirty-five in, in games if you have that.
And again, we, we, we wanted to come to the board with a reasonable proposal, so that we didn't, you know, overwhelm the board with requests, and then not have the data to show it, so we, you know, that's why we were saying, hey, if we can come on as a JV team, we may, we may come back to you next year and say, hey, we had to cut ten boys, and we had a full season, we could've went to the club. We could add a coach after that. What I would hate to do is add two coaches and not have the participation.
Right. As a sport, can we do on the field what we have done in the past? Or do we have to actually permanently mark the two different field layouts?
So the boys' and the girls' field are completely different. The boys' is more of a couple circles, they call them creases, and the girls have more of an arc for their crease, and so that's, you would have to look at, I know like Lombard South, for instance, they have some temporary washable, like, paint that they put down on their, on their field, the turf that washes away. But again, you have to look at the liability on the turf, and, and if we could even do that. So I know we have some room at different parks, and it's something we can investigate as well, so look into those options.
But there is. So you don't know where you're gonna play the home games next year?
We, so what we did this year is we marked out the field here, next to the southeast lot. And it's not to a T the dimensions, but the IHSA is pretty flexible with what they provide. But going forward, we'd want something permanent that we could put down, whether that's going to a park and, and having that laid down on a permanent basis, but that's, that would be more cost-effective than marking your field up.
The bigger dimensions can be a little bit altered, the goals, obviously, and the size of that scoring area has to be detailed, but.
Boys and girls are both spring sports?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the dilemmas that all schools face moving into lacrosse, was the spring is very busy, and now it's, you know, another outside sport with weather. And that's some of the reason why some of these games, especially this year, we all know, the spring just completely socked a lot of teams in areas where.
Well, they showed a lot of dedication, because they would have to practice after the soccer, right? So they were here at seven-thirty, eight o'clock to ten o'clock, right?
Which would be another thing that they would be worked into.
Right, rotation, to, as, you know, as fair as you can do with spring sports, and everybody, you know, gets their shot at each, each area.
So we've had, had some obstacles to overcome here, just the financial, you know, aspect of getting this up and running, and we did it within one year, so that shows you the amount of, you know, dedication from the community. And from these kids, and I know Lombard South, it took them about five years to get up and going. For us to do it, this was presented to me in the fall, we had it up and running, we played games in the spring of last year, it was pretty phenomenal, through donations, fundraising, things like that.
We, we see the activity, from the parents were really supportive, getting outside donation, it went up to like twenty-five thousand dollars at one point, right? And it paid for stipends, and.
Yep.
Very supportive.
We, yeah, and we were able to get quite a bit of equipment, too. You know, and get some volunteer coaches to dedicate their time was huge, and so, that's why I think that.
And as it becomes a sport, they can actually go to the boosters, and maybe the boosters will actually talk to them this time?
Right.
Yes.
That's the goal, and we already have, you know, some items on that list, too. But, just from what you say, and the dedication from our kids, the ability to overcome all these obstacles, practicing late, scheduling, you know, getting these games going, equipment things. So I, I see this as a thriving sport, it's, it's very popular in the area. I think the participation rate's gonna go through the roof here in these local schools.
Well, then you have a home game last year, and what was the attendance in the stadium?
Couple hundred at least, yeah.
So, one thing we looked at in the past is, and Wes asked the question, what sports are we gonna suck players out of by putting this in as a spring sport?
Right.
So.
Well, there's no guarantee, we're, we don't know for sure where they're coming from, you know, there is a tendency for certain types of athletes to play the different sports and stuff like that, but yeah, there, that's always a concern of all those sports, is that some, they'll lose some players here and there, but again, it's, you know, again, people's choice, kids' choices.
I understand it, but I mean, that's, that's not the answer to the question, what sport is it likely that we're gonna draw players if we didn't have lacrosse from next spring?
For boys or girls?
To a separate.
Well, for boys, football's tended to be one of the primary lacrosse, so that doesn't really change football, you know, just brings them.
No, what spring sport, are we losing, gonna lose kids in different?
I would say there'd be probably be some track kids, because their speed is an option.
Okay.
You know, fewer baseball kids sitting on the bench, I don't know the thought process, what you would think, you know?
Okay.
A girl's soccer, who's not playing, it's a speed sport, so the people who can run tend to do, and they have a better chance at competing.
I think on the plus sides, too, there's so much research about having, varying your sports as an athlete, not being sport-specific, and this offers another opportunity for, in your fall athletes, to get involved, if they're not involved, if they're just in the weight room, well, now you're out there doing something extra. Getting some eye coordination, things like that, so, yeah, we may lose a couple to softball or to track, but I think we're gonna gain on the plus side, so many more two- or three-sport athletes because of it, too.
The other schools indicated that backups in other sports who sought maybe a starting role, that tended to be happening, that some kids that weren't playing as much as they wanted to, did move over. And so, thinned out things, it didn't eliminate anything, it thinned out some of the depth in some of the sports.
So, I mean, if it's one thing we look at, what it's gonna cost, it's about twenty thousand, obviously, for all sports, right? And we look at, we're spending money on clubs in sports to increase the participation. So, doesn't sound like, it sounds like it will increase the participation, will probably lower the participation, at least partially in a couple other sports, overall, we're not gonna pick up.
Maybe, maybe not.
Roughly, I'd say half, you know?
About half, so we'll pick up like twenty-five.
Yeah, there's gonna be some that already played something, you know?
The other thing is, when we've had to look tightly at our budget in the past, and had to consider cutting sports, when some of us came on the board, we looked at how we compared to other schools, and what we, sports and clubs we make available, and we're already way at the top of the list on how many sports we make available, right?
Yeah, and what we're, we are, and what we did to prepare for this is, Tom sent out kind of a survey to all the schools in his connective network, and I don't know how many schools you had on that list.
It was probably thirty to thirty-five that responded accurately, and, and again, they, it was one, I think they all took baby steps, so to speak, kinda like we did, and then as they progressed, then they went to the protective gear in there. And some have still had, you know, a transition for, like, how they paid for the coaches and things like that, but I think the main concern was the safety and the supervision, which are the two major costs that are proposed here.
If this is a sport, if we, let's say we had eight women who wanted to play next year, girls, can they play on the boys' team for lacrosse or not?
No, because there's a like sport of their kind.
Okay. So do we, if we make a decision, we're going to do this, and we approve a coach's stipend, do we have to pay the coach, even if we don't have enough players to play on the girls' team?
That would be, you have a question, I'll answer it.
Okay.
I would say as long as they have enough notice, we may, I would say no, or we would only be responsible for a portion. I would think that a lot of the people in the audience today, if they thought the board were seriously considering this for July, would make it a good point to make sure that there was enough girls and boys to participate if.
Well, it sounds like we're gonna, if we had thirty-five or forty, we probably could do it pretty easily, but twenty.
I don't think anybody would be here if they didn't think the numbers were moving in the right direction, and just didn't wanna be caught behind.
I think some of the audience members would help recruit them, encourage their friends to try it, if it was to become a, a sport on both levels.
Without any prompting and the results of the survey, and I know it's a survey, you click a box, but that amount of response from just that question is encouraging. So I'm, I'm pretty optimistic that this is gonna be a thriving program in this school, and it's an engaging, exciting sport, and it's gonna be another opportunity to go back to, to multiple-sport athletes, another venue, another opportunity for our kids to get involved here, and that's what we're about, so.
Did we answer all the questions there were submitted?
Oh, there's an addition, there's a uniform question. Currently, right now, there's only one uniform that's required, and so, uniform costs were added, but that's in anticipation of two thousand twenty-two, when you need two, two sports home, or two uniforms home and away.
Oh, okay.
Jerseys.
So right now, this IHSA only requires one color jersey?
Correct.
Are there any other questions from the board?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, the second report under the principal's report is our second semester culture report, where Dave reports out on attendance, student discipline, and overall extracurricular clubs.
Before that, just so the parents are aware that, after the discipline report, the board president will move up the visitor statements, so if there are parents looking to make a comment about lacrosse, they will have their opportunity under visitor statements.
All right, well, thank you, good evening, so, today we're gonna talk about the school culture report, which includes an attendance comparison for second semester, as well as a behavioral report, which outlines suspensions. And lastly, the engagement numbers for entire year under our extracurricular programs. First, looking at the attendance report, the average daily attendance for this semester was ninety-three point nine-four. I do wanna note that this comes directly from our Skyward data system, so this is the, the data that we submit to the state, is ninety-three point four for the semester. Looking at the total attendance by reason, that's hand-calculated, so there's a little bit of a difference between those attendance numbers from the excused and unexcused categories, based on hand calculations. And how we do that is we take the total number of unexcused absences or excused absences, and we divide it by the number of school days per month. So they're closely to where we needed them to be, but we're not exact on certain, certain months. We sent the previous report out, and we included, we did not include the waived students, so if there's any hospitalizations or students in those categories, that's why those numbers are a little bit off, so we put those students back in, recalculated it, and then sent that out to you this afternoon. So when we look at our excused absences, total semester averages for the semester of students that were excused was eighty-two students per day. If you look at the months, pretty comparable, in May, obviously, we have more students here, as we wind up the, the school year, students are more apt to be in class, prepare for their final exams, things like that, that's pretty consistent from year to year. Looking at the unexcused absences, fourteen point four-four unexcused average per day, students are out that they didn't call in, or don't have a reason for their excuse. Moving into tardies, tardies are calculated through our HERO system, and you keep going down, which is a good thing, each year, so when we started the HERO program, fifteen, sixteen, thirteen point three-eight, so we knew that was gonna go up a little bit, because now we have a consistent way of tracking our tardies. Previous to that, teachers would just do that within their own classroom, so they may get to it halfway through their instruction, or at the end of their lesson plan, and so those were a little bit inconsistent with how those were tracked. Now, each student, if they're late, the teacher closes the door, they have to go to the security, they get a pass, and so that's accurately collected. So the total semester would be eleven point five-three per student per period that we're tardying. We saw a little bit of an increase here as the weather got a little bit better. We always see a little bit of a decrease in the beginning, right, but as the weather increases and the school year winds up, we see a little bit more students late to class. But we are seeing a decrease overall in students in the hallways after the bell, so that's encouraging for us, so it's eleven point five-three. Overall, see, it was a pretty good year for attendance, and this is the state average daily attendance that we're gonna report. Semester one's ninety-five point one, that was the highest going back to thirteen, fourteen. Semester two, ninety-three point nine, again, a little bit higher than last year at ninety-three, seven, and at the end of the year here, we finished off at ninety point, ninety-four point five-two, that's gonna be our end-of-the-year ADA that we report to the state. And again, these are estimates on the ADA, we're gonna wait till the fall to give you that official number, 'cause there, there's gonna be a little bit of, our students that transfer out are calculated into our overall ADA until the state gets that report. So in the fall, we'll give that final number to you.
So last year, we talked about Thursday's late start, did you see any, you know, we talked about how to, how to help that, or that was, a lot of kids were, the majority of our late tardiness. Segment to late start day.
Yeah.
Would you see that?
I think just through.
This year?
This year, it, it has been decreasing, to be honest with you. Just being present at, right at door A at the start of the school day, we've seen those numbers completely diminish. When we started the HERO system, to be honest with you, we'd have a hundred kids lined up at the door waiting to get in, and now it's down to maybe eight, nine kids on average. So we've seen a significant decrease, I think that's due to the consistent enforcement of consequences, you know, if, once they reach a certain number, they're gonna get a consequence. So if you get three tardies, you're gonna hit a lunch detention, you know, and we had a lunch detention person in there almost every day this year, so that assisted with us as well. So if you're gonna get three, you're gonna automatically go in on this selected date. And so with a, a person that's there every single day now, we're able to enforce a little bit better, we saw those numbers decline, so it's been a, been a positive thing. Any other questions on that? Just a couple things that we've been doing, uh, we completed, obviously, parent phone calls and building meetings, we did fifty-three home visits for students not attending school throughout the year, so that's where our deans and now our school safety liaison would go out to the house, uh, talk with the parents, see if we can get the student to school, uh, see if, you know, if there's anything that we can do, if there's another intervention we can try, but I think it brings that connection from school to home together, and, and that's an added thing, and I'm, I'm really fortunate to have, um, our deans that are, are out front and doing that, and now, that lane's here along with them, and it's, it's an added bonus here that we can do. The dean's office did, after exhausting all our interventions, so if we do the home visit, we do the parent conference, we rope in student services, we maybe look at some special ed eligibility, if that's really not working, um, the end result unfortunately may be a truancy ticket, where they have to go in front of a judge and have to explain their absence to a judge, so we did enforce thirty truancy tickets over across of the school year. Again, we, we roped in with the student services team through student intervention meetings, and we reviewed those behaviors, how we can curb those behaviors, what can we do inside the classroom, how can we maybe get teachers to help out with some behavior stuff, things like that. Again, then using HEROs to accurately track tardies has helped our behaviors as well. New initiatives this year, um, there was a question about the cell phone parking, um, I, I put a request out to our teachers to see if they'd be interested in getting like a, we call it a parking mat for cell phones, so they hang it right by their, their desk, so, you know, it's in a semi-secure location, when students come in, they put their cell phones in, and that way, they disconnect. And sometimes, we think, we know that students need a, like, a little bit of an incentive to disconnect from their, from their cell phones, and now that everyone's one-to-one, they really don't need a cell phone. And so, if the student would turn in their cell phone, we'd give them five HERO points, and teachers would then complete that, and at the end of the year, we had a big HERO party where we gave away t-shirts, ice cream, things like that, we had a dunk tank out there, and some teachers were in that. So, it's, it's an incentive for kids to disconnect, but also get some rewards on, on the end of it. So, that worked out really well. Uh, we significantly increased the amount of, uh, attendance meetings that we've had with the social workers, counselors, with our psychologists, we really looked at our special ed data this year, having those frequent meetings with our psychologists to identify students from our special ed category that may need some assistance, um, behaviorally. Hallway restriction, sending out that list, if you hit a certain number of tardies, you're gonna be on hallway restriction, that means students during the class period, if they needed an escort, if they needed to come out of the room, we would provide that to them, but if not, they'd be on hallway restriction where they could not get out of the classroom. And then we sent letters, obviously, to parents and guardians who, students have ten absences, and then we followed that up with the meeting. So, a lot of things that are going on in the dean's office, I think all contributed to our positive attendance rate.
Discipline?
All right, second semester, I think, was a really good semester for us, discipline-wise, we had zero alcohol suspensions. You look at our drug possessions, um, we've had, total offenses were four, total students three, so we had one repeat offender there. Fighting was way down, and I think that's contributed to having a safety liaison in the building at all times. We're down from first semester, and if you look at fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we're down, uh, we had seven total, uh, students that were involved in four offenses there. Disrupting learning environment, bullying, intimidation, um, suspended four students for that, zero gang suspensions, zero thefts suspensions, two weapon possession, um, and that would be a student bringing in, you know, a fake knife or a toy gun or something like that, and that's something that we had to address at the end of the year. Inappropriate or not compliant behavior, disrespecting of all. That's always where we're gonna see our most suspensions from, and maybe where, you know, it's just an insubordinate student that's not willing to budge, or not willing to cooperate, and so, we had nine total suspensions there, um, nine students had suspensions, and then other offenses, maybe an electronic violation or something like that, where students going on a website or somewhere not appropriate, um, misuse of their technology. So, totals, we had twenty-five total, and then twenty-eight students for suspensions.
So, the numbers from twenty-fourteen to twenty-seventeen, significant?
Very significant.
Could you tell us then why in twenty-fifteen, sixteen, and fourteen, fifteen, you had like roughly seventy and seventy, in the last two years, you were like thirty and thirty? What, what do you feel changed that we went half?
Yeah, so when I came in, the state changed their requirement for suspensions a little bit.
Right.
Through Senate Bill one hundred, and because of that, now we need to exhaust every intervention prior to suspending a student. So, that may be looking at, uh, alternate day assignments a little more frequently than just going out and suspending a student, limiting the number of suspension days for a student for offense, and then also, I think, just roping in additional resources. So, when a student is suspended, they automatically come back, and we have a reentry meeting, and we team that reentry meeting up with our counselor or social workers, and then we can continually stay on that with the student as well. So, we've seen a progressive, um, intervention track here, instead of just, let's put the student out and then hope they change their behavior and come back, let's work to restore their behavior, um, in the school while we have them here.
So, would you say, are you able to say, maybe Kristen would be a better person to answer the question, because you're only, this is your second year, right?
Third year, third year, yeah.
I'm sorry, this is your, how many years you've been here?
This is my, uh, sixth.
Six, so, do you think the, is this much that with all the work you're doing, we're seeing better behavior of the students, or is it just the change in the law that required us not to suspend students for things we used to suspend them for?
Uh, I would certainly say it's a combination of both.
Okay.
Um, you know, certainly, we're a high school, so we're always gonna have students that, you know, misbehaving, need to be redirected, but, um, you know, certainly, I think, uh, it's a combination of a lot of the hard work that the staff, especially Dave Mannan, have put in, um, to, uh, put some positive incentives in for our students, as well as, um, change the way we discipline students, um, and certainly, you know, Senate Bill one hundred helped as well.
Additional lane?
In addition to lane, and the state's doing a really good job now of providing professional development for our deans. So, when they go out to these dean conferences, they learn about restorative practices, and when we put Lane, Lane has gone out to three conferences himself, and he talks with local off officials, and, you know, how can we form relationships with students and not, you know, rather than just kicking them out for a couple of days, let's bring them in, let's get to know them, let's see what the triggers and ancients are for their behavior, and it's really been working, so we're gonna continue that.
Were there any other questions that needed to be addressed, Dave?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, Kristen, did you have anything else you wanted to address?
Uh, no, just the last two pages, um, of Dave's report, talk about, um, activities, and that's just an overview of, um, participation by activity, and then, when he comes back in the fall, um, he'll report out on specific engagement rate, um, which includes athletics and goes into a little bit more detail.
So, this is a lot of data here, it's rough data, and we'll give you, you know, our fall, our report here, uh, but this is from, all of our sponsors submit a roster to us that gets put into our Skyward system, we pull our participation rates out of that. And if you look at all of our categories here, we've had a pretty good year, um, eleven sixty-three was last year, one thousand one hundred and eleven was this year, but then you look at all of the activities that we've added, um, since I've been here, we've added more than ten activities, and that's awesome, and, and that's, uh, some of those are on volunteer status. So, if you look at our lacrosse gaming club, Project Seven, the Helping Paws Club, hip hop club, robotics was a huge addition this year, and ping pong, and it's over a hundred additional students that are engaged, um, after school hours. So, it's been a huge plus for us, um, so although you see the total there, it is a little bit down, overall, we're way up. And robotics this year is another offering for STEM that we have in the building, I'm really excited about that program, and that was a volunteer program that was not funded, and they went out and sought grants from the first organization, matching grants, they had some community donations, and they were awarded one of the up-and-coming programs, um, in their first year, it's phenomenal, and we had about nineteen students that are involved in that, and they're gonna continue to grow. So, I'm excited about that program and all the other extracurriculars that we have to offer here, it's just, you know, a really cool place to, for students to, if they have an idea, to come explore that idea with us, and then if they have the participation and the engagement, we're gonna run with it, as long as we have the backing from our staff and we have the sponsors on board. And so, this is the fun part of my job, is really seeing what we can give back to our students in the, in the means of extracurriculars, and so, our, our rates are increasing, and, and overall, our kids are getting involved, so.
So, you're not counting the one thirty-eight and the eleven fifty-three?
Down below, correct.
I would say the board would probably tell you that, as long as those kids are participating in a club that's supervised, even if it's a volunteer or probationary status, they're still off, they're not sitting at home on Facebook or Instagram, they're doing something, so.
Right.
Would the board be supportive of including that one thirty-three and the eleven fifty-three?
Yeah.
We have others where we, isn't the athletic trainer group, that's purely voluntary?
Yeah.
It's another one that's been voluntary for years.
Our tech department as well.
And I would, I would, I would add hockey on there, because.
Oh, yeah.
So, we're well over thirteen hundred, then. I think you should update that and just give me a new copy, and I'll send it out to the board in my Friday update. Include hockey and the, uh, clubs that are on probation, because the board wants kids just getting involved after school or before school, whether it's a probationary club or not, they're involved in some, they're hard or something. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, board?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move, uh, visitor statements up, I'm gonna look to my left, anyone wanna make a visitor statement? It's my.
Somebody's getting ready.
Somebody gonna, all right, let me, if you're gonna come up here, I have to read the, uh, visitor statement preamble. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages participation of its citizens in the business of school district. There are two points in a meeting where visitor statements are scheduled, citizens are welcome to raise questions and make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note that the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor's comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting to the superintendent. In addition, the Board of Education is interested in receiving suggestions and concern from members of the community. Any individuals make, any, may make a suggestion or express a concern at the district or school office, all suggestions and our concerns will be referred to the appropriate level staff, appropriate level staff member or district administrator who is able to respond in time and manner. Each concern or suggestion shall be considered on its merit. Any vision, individual who is not satisfied after the following channels of authority may file grievance under the Board Policy two colon two sixty Uniform Grievance Procedure. Neither this policy nor the Uniform Grievance Procedure creates an independent right to a hearing before the board. For more details, refer to the Board Policy two colon two thirty Public Participation in Board Education Meetings and petitions to the Board, and Board Policy eight colon one ten Public Suggestions and Concerns.
Everybody good there?
Yeah. When you come up there, please state your name and what village you're from, thank you.
Thanks, my name is Rich Fantozzi, um, I'm from Berwin. I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to be here today. I didn't have any, uh, I didn't plan to say anything today, but, uh, because I have, um, a lot of the players who I coach in Berwin for our youth program, um, in the area, I thought I'd help them along. Um, I think Dave did a great job in explaining, um, kind of what we have been trying to do for the last two, three years here, and you guys had a lot of questions, I think he articulated answers that, um, hopefully get us, um, to put this into win category, maybe in July. In any event, this is one of my players, his name is Tommy Cos, he lives here in Riverside, and he wanted something short to say.
Both my mother and father played sports here at RB, and I really wanna play lacrosse when I come here.
That's it, Tommy?
That's it.
That's a power statement, buddy, way to take over the room. Good job, Tommy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, coming up. State your name and village.
Hello, my name is Sherry Gomez, and I live here in Brookfield, and I'm here on behalf of the lacrosse program as well. Um, I have three children, and we also have guardianship of my nephew. Um, two of my kids are here today, Gabriella is going to be a freshman coming up here at RB, and she, um, decided, she's been a cheerleader since first grade, and she decided actually not to cheer, um, for RB, but she would rather play lacrosse. So, she went to East Avenue Lacrosse this year, um, and played in their spring session and loved it, and is really looking forward to playing, um, on the girls' team this, um, next coming up year. Um, she knows at least two girls, at least two other girls that are gonna be trying out for the team as well. Um, they're gonna also incoming freshmen, so you have three, three coming up, um, minimum. Uh, my, my son Alex, he's going to be in seventh grade at SC Gross, and he's been playing lacrosse for two years now as well, um, with Coach Rich, and he has every plan to come and play, uh, boys' lacrosse here, um, as well. And my older son, uh, just graduated, um, class two thousand eighteen, and he came in in the introduction year of lacrosse, um, as a junior, played his junior, played his senior year, he's a football player for ten years, um, didn't have a spring sport, he doesn't, he's played, I think, every sport, but he never really stuck with anything except for football. Then lacrosse came along, and he loved it, and that gave him an opportunity to come and do something in the springtime, um, where, you know, if we didn't have that, he'd be sitting home, you know, playing video games, probably. So, um, we appreciate the opportunity, and you have an entire family, um, of lacrosse players here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They already got the wares, look at the lacrosse wares on these guys already, it looks good.
I'm Jacob Spinella, this is my brother.
I'm Andrew Spinella.
Um, I don't have too much to say, I've been the captain for the boys' team for the last two years here, so, I've been involved a lot with the program, try to do as much as I can around here. I think, uh, as far as like eighth graders coming in, and especially lots of the younger guys that picked up the sport this year, a lot of them seem more motivated to play lacrosse than I've seen, you know, more motivation to do anything as far as like kids and teenagers go. I think RB has a pretty good chance to become a pretty big, like, powerhouse as far as lacrosse, there's a lot of talent and like effort that everyone likes to put in.
Um, I'm Andrew Spinella, we, we both live in Riverside, and I've been playing lacrosse for about six years now, really fun, I played for the Berwin Bombers with, um, Rich Fantozzi, and I played at East Ave, and I'm really, I've, I was really excited for this year to play at RB, it was really fun, and I've, I'm looking forward to the next couple of years, having a team and being able to play other schools as a JV sport, 'cause we, we missed out on a couple of games not being a JV sport, and I feel like it would be better to have more games.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and.
Um, hi, I'm Jane Durkin.
I'm Lane Cheery.
And, um, I was one of the captains of the girls' lacrosse team this year.
And I was a captain this year and last year, and I'm gonna be a junior.
And I'm gonna be a sophomore. Um, we are both RBHS lacrosse players and play outside of school. We hope that you will approve lacrosse as an IHSI sport, so that we can officially represent our school in the sport.
So, yeah, and before I go off of this, I just wanna mention that before the season started, we also had morning practices every Monday and Wednesday at six fif, six fifteen AM in the fieldhouse or the east gym, and I know that there were a lot of dedicated players that came to that, so like, that helped boost our season before the season started. So, yeah, so we had a great season, we actually played eight games, and we won six and lost two. Um, it's fun to get to know like new players, sorry, it's fun to get to know new players and just, it's a great, um, sport to just bond with new people, like, I met a not, a lot of new people, like, even in my grade, that I didn't spend a lot of time with normally. Um, so, yeah, and I've been playing for a long time, and I just love the sport, so lots of younger kids play too, and we would love to see them like come out and have a chance to play when they're in high school, so, yeah.
So, do you think there's an opportunity to grow the numbers that are participating on the girls' side?
Absolutely, I mean.
It's already growing a lot. It's kind of based, like, it's very popular on the east coast, and it's kind of starting to make its way.
Right, I'm talking about on the east side of this building.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We gotta get, right, that's a deal, certain, if the board's gonna invest, they wanna make sure.
Yeah, absolutely, I think it's definitely a growing sport, I know that I've been playing for a long time, and since I started, so many more girls have played, and I, I met Jane, like, when we were young, like, playing lacrosse, and, um, yeah, I think that helps, and we also have a lot of club sports, and we're surrounded by schools that have teams, so I think that helps, like, I know Hensel Central won the state championship this year for, yeah, like, lacrosse, and just, I know that it's definitely a growing sport, because I played, like, I was, helped coach, like, younger teams, and it's definitely a growing sport.
Okay. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I know that it's definitely a growing sport, because I played, like I was helped coach like younger teams, and it's definitely a growing sport.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ian Pearson from River Forest. I am the boys' head coach. Thanks for having us tonight. I'd also like to thank all the parents and Dave and players who have put a tremendous amount of time and commitment into this. I'm committed to this because I love the game. I came, I'm a Canadian-American, I moved to New Jersey into lacrosse cultural hotbed. And it's lacrosse that taught me what the United States means when it comes to community and tradition. And so that is only going to grow here. Lacrosse, it's important to acknowledge historically is a Native American game that was healing to the community and brought people together. And I think you do see that in the United States. You're not only seeing two coasts bridged together as numbers grow across California and the west coast, we're also seeing opportunities for kids to go to colleges as well. Having come here from New Jersey for three years, I've helped develop the East Ave youth program that I know Mrs. Gomez had mentioned. I've helped develop Concordia University of Chicago that needs more players. So lacrosse being the fastest growing sport for over a decade in the United States, there's no doubt that these numbers will continue to go up. And there's no doubt that these numbers will continue to provide opportunities beyond just the high school level. And of course, prior to the high school level, you'll only see these youth programs go upwards of thousands of kids. And I know that through experience, and I know that also just by looking at the surrounding communities here and the resources that are here, so.
Thank you, Ian.
Hi, my name is Mike Lawby, I live in Riverside. I helped Fantozzi out with the youth program over there in Berwyn, the Berwyn Bombers. I have two boys playing lacrosse right now, one is an incoming freshman, the other's going into fifth grade, so he's coming up into this. I would encourage you, they want to, both want to play lacrosse, they both play on the Bombers and on East Avenue pretty much year-round. They both want to play lacrosse here. I would encourage you guys to support this. I actually hear your concerns about not having enough kids. I would probably tell you that your concern should be about having too many kids if this program becomes a program. I think you'll have more than enough kids to field multiple teams. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, if you guys all want to leave at this point, we still have more, a lot more meetings. Feel free to walk out now.
I think before they leave, should Mary Ann and I have this on the agenda as a new business item for more discussion in July?
Yeah, definitely.
Is the board okay with that?
Yes.
If you've never seen a game, you've got to watch one, just grab YouTube and pile it up. It's a very exciting game.
Thanks again. You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave, you can leave too.
He was going with the crowd.
All right, we have discussion, information.
Chief Financial.
I always skip over you.
Sorry, Scott.
Got to put that bullet.
He wanted to leave an audience here for him.
Chief Financial Officer report, all right.
Okay, I'd like to highlight the May 2018 financials. This is 11 months of our current budget, that's 92%. If we look at the first report on Board Book page 24 and look at the May 2018 financial report, our total monthly revenue for all funds was $550,000. Our three biggest sources of revenue for the month are real estate taxes, general state aid, and corporate property replacement taxes. If we look at our total monthly expenditures, that totaled $1.86 million. Salary and benefits, which is our largest expenditure, which accounts for roughly 72% of our overall expenditures, that was $1.48 million. And our out-of-district tuition for the month of May was $78,900. Our operating fund balance at the end of May were $17.2 million. I do want to bring attention that the board has restricted $3 million in the working cash fund. So our actual operating fund balance at the end of May is $14.2 million. If we move on to Board Book page 25 and look at the financial statement for the month ending May 31st, you will see our beginning balance plus our revenue year to, for 11 months, minus our expenditures, showing our ending balances in each fund. On page 26 of Board Book, it highlights the revenue. You'll notice that in our operating funds, our four big main funds were at 3% to 4% over budget on that. I'm not expecting much revenue to come in within June. We will receive some payments from the state for our general state aid. Currently, we're sitting at about $830,000 over budget. I'm anticipating to be closer to $1 million over budget on the revenue side. If we look at the expenditure side, you'll see that in our operating funds, we are tracking at budget or under budget. That trend continues. That will be a good thing. Overall, for the year, looking at what our revenue is and what our expenditures are, looking at potentially, at best case, a slight surplus, and at worst case, would be a slight deficit. Ultimately, what we're hoping for is to come in at a balanced budget that's out there. I do want to...
Wait a second, what's the original target for the beginning of the year, what's the deficit?
$326,000 deficit.
And you just said you're going to come over about a million over on revenue?
Yes.
What, I didn't hear you say what million dollars in expenses we're going to come over on.
If it comes in at budget and with the revenue there, what I wanted to bring to your attention is that we did receive some property taxes that were supposed to be distributed in FY '17, and that came in FY '18. So with that being said, with everything factored in, I do see us being better than what was predicted at the beginning of the year.
So on a cash value, we'll look at higher, but when the auditor comes in and accrues it?
But we do it on a cash basis.
Right, our treasurer runs on a cash basis.
It's not confused people here.
Yes.
There's only one person who understands the accrual, and that's the auditor. So we started at a 326 deficit. We're at a million, about a million over, we're going to be on revenue. So we're going to be somewhere in between the 700 or $680,000 deficit or...
Surplus.
Or less.
Yeah, I was just kind of factoring in with those additional taxes, you know, with it. So that's where you would get the slight surplus or a slight deficit, depending on if anything major. I don't think anything major's coming in in June with it, as you can tell with the board bills that are out there.
You did a summary of the revenue and expenditures, you had some questions submitted, do you want to just touch on those?
Yes. There was a question about boys' soccer stipends. There were, in the new contract, it has increased. There was one head coach and increased to three assistants. The previous contract had two assistants only. I overs, it was an oversight on that.
Well, the over, the question isn't about your budget being off, it's about the way you're explaining it. The contract doesn't set any number of coaches for any team. It sets what the pay rate is for them. The board decides annually, when the principal and the superintendent recommend the coaching stipends, how many coaches we're going to have. I just want to make sure we don't say that, the contract does not set the number of coaches for any sport, right?
On the page after that, it lists a chart where it lists the head coach and the number of assistants per sport in the contract. I think if the numbers were reduced, we could go to the stipend committee that's defined in the contract to reduce the number of stipends or increase the number. So in the contract, it does spell out that four coaches were added in the 16 through 19 contract. And then the next page, it has a chart where it shows how many assistants and how many head coaches are in each sport. What's not, what changes every year is we can assign, reassign those to every student, every employee. Nobody is retained more than one year.
Okay.
Correct. What you're saying is correct.
Okay.
There was a question on the amount of taxes that were distributed for the current month and why they were. A third of them was in prior year, that's just how Cook County distributes the taxes. There's no science as to how they're going to be distributed or what tax year they're going to be in. It all depends on when they make that distribution, what year they're actually for.
Well, I keep asking you this. Are you saying the county doesn't actually match the receipts for what people say they're paying? Because that's what it sounds like you're saying, and that would, I don't think, follow the law. So I think it's still something you have to get more information about. I don't think the county can just willy-nilly say, this is a, this assessment, that's that assessment. That's why you have to give them your bill when you pay it, so you match the payment with the bill, right?
When we went through this, from the questions on this a while ago, I had Scott give me what he receives. It just gives them a summary, and it's assigned by tax year.
And I understand it, but let's assume the county is doing it correctly, because they should be, right? So the question really is, why are we getting such high receipts still for the prior assessment? You know, it's not, I'm not suggesting the county's doing it wrong, or your research you did was wrong. It just doesn't make sense to me that we're getting a third, at this time of the year, a third of our receipts are from the prior assessment. It doesn't, it's not logical to me.
Well, what if people paid late?
That would be the answer, but you think, you know, a third of the receipts are coming up from people paying late last time?
Well, if the property was in foreclosure, or you have some properties in probate, or we've had a lot of sales in Brookfield, that could prolong money being transferred for taxes. And then, once the property is sold, there would be the catch-up in taxes to the new owner of the property.
I think we're speculating, why don't you get what their interpretation of why they're classifying it that way? And, you know, I mean, there's a variety of reasons. I know, get a better answer from them.
Can we track how much 17 we got in 18, and 16 we got in 17?
And then we can figure out how much 18 we're going to get in 19?
I'll have to work, I'll work through the auditor to try to come up with how to accrue all that, and how to determine what tax year it truly was for, and I'll see what I can do to work with the auditor.
It just seems crazy.
My problem is, this is far and away pays all of our bills. And I feel like we don't know how we're getting it or how it's coming to us. And if we don't know how it's getting, how it's coming to us, we have a hard time every year when we do the budget estimating what we think we're going to get the next year. That's what my concern is, is like, this should be like something somebody here knows like the back of their hand. How it's working, how we're getting receipts, so that we're careful in predicting our future revenue, because we're getting into years when we're going to do deficit spending. And we have to understand this well, to make sure we're like this. We think we're going to, you know, we're a million dollars over in revenue this year. And I'm going to guess...
$600,000 was from taxes that got paid in July.
For whatever the reason was, we knew that last July, what was happening with the tax payments. They've already been received.
That's what you promised me, well, we did the budget, well, we're going to get this extra money, right?
Because we knew before we approved last year's budget that prior year tax revenues came in before we even approved the budget. But we didn't account for it in there. So we're still talking about adjusting it. And I'd like to see this year, we don't have to do that. That we are confident that the numbers are falling into place with the right assessment period, and that we have a much better handle. We're probably going to come up above $500,000 surplus this year, somewhere in that range, I'm guessing. Which is going to be maybe four or 500,000, it's a $750,000 difference. That's a lot of money when you're talking about deficit spending. And I think we just have to get a better handle on this, and make sure that we know what it is, so that if we have to approve a budget again next year that's close to deficit spending, which is what we're proposing right now, we have a better comfort. I don't have to say that Wes again, well, we're going to come over $500,000 over probably. Because it's discomforting, at least to me as a board member, that we just can't get our hands around this. I mean, we should be able to get our hands around it and understand it very well.
And maybe, maybe you're going to come back and they're going to say, you won't get your hands on it. I know in the month of May, Cook County does a tax sale. So, and then they get tax receipts in for delinquent taxes. This could be the receipts on those delinquent, I don't know, but we're speculating here. So I think the best thing is to try to get clarity from, you know...
I'll do everything I can to get clarity.
To see why you get a big flush of receipts from a prior year tax in this time of the year, type of thing, you know? And why it's being categorized that way.
Also, work through Chris, the auditor, see if he has a contact maybe at the clerk's office or... Because I understand, as much as the board wants to get, I mean, Cook County is, Cook County... But maybe the auditor has somebody that can better help us with some direction on this.
Or our attorney of France who does the appeals, but they understand it real well. That's another person you could ask.
Is it France who does the appeals?
Yes, any other questions on that you have to cover, Scott?
Uh, yes. On Board Book page 52, under the cellphone account, under operations and maintenance, it is over budget by about $2,500 bucks. What happened here is there's been some staff replacement phones that had to be purchased. And then there were also staff members that put in for reimbursement that should have been for last year, that hit in this year. Moving forward, I have corrected this, where all staff members that get reimbursed for their cellphone will be turning in their bills either on a quarterly or a monthly basis, so that it won't carry over into the next one. And this line item has been increased for next year in the tentative budget.
Thank you.
Any other ones?
Nothing more on the revenue expense.
Is that it for everything you wanted to cover in Chief Financial?
No.
Okay, what else you want to cover?
In your board packet was the summary of the student activity accounts for May. There are a couple that are negative. Puppets is doing a fundraiser, so they purchased some stuff. The money will be, once the fundraising gets done, it will be redeposited in on that negative. And as far as moving after the student activity report is the life safety update.
I have a question, I think I asked this last time, the testing was for AP, is that correct?
That is for AP testing.
And you got all those bills already paid?
The bills should be...
Because 126 came through.
There was a big chunk that was paid. I don't know if there's still a couple that are still hanging out there with it as they finalize actual test giving to be scored and everything. So that's, but I know a big chunk was paid.
Is it going to be another third coming through?
That I do not know. I'll have to look into exactly what is outstanding.
Why don't we make note to follow the testing account, see if Jen could pull a three-year historical, because if it historically gets wiped down, otherwise we need to maybe create a board account.
Right.
So that those fees aren't carried over every year in the testing account, they're put in a board account. Okay? Let's do a three-year historical, we can report back on that in June, or July.
If we could go to, let's see, what's...
65.
For the life safety summary. We did have a finance, I mean, a facilities advisory council on May 24th. This is kind of just a update as to what will be happening over the summer, and what will be addressed in our Life Safety Amendment 22. So if we look at the summer and fall of 18, we're going to be having fire sprinkler work done, smoke detection, replacing interior fire doors. There'll be concrete work being done, electrical work being done, plumbing work being done. As you remember, this amendment has smaller items on it, not the large items like we had the previous summer with the roofs. So they're being addressed either internally, that the district is purchasing the supplies, and Airmark is getting it done on their time, or we're paying Airmark... and Airmark is getting it done on their time, or we're paying Airmark to do it on the weekend. The only big project that will have to have an architect, engineer, and a contractor will be the Suresco unit, which is the pool HVAC, that is projected to be done the following summer. We're in the process of seeing options and exploring options that are out there. This is anticipated to go to bid in October, November of this current year, to be set to go for the summer of two thousand and nineteen. The last thing remaining with the life safety dollars that are out there, we do still have three sections of roof that needs to be completed. So, that'll be after we get done with Life Safety Amendment, with the leftover money that is available with that, plus what was left over from the previous project, that will be addressed, the roofs will be addressed using those dollars.
Plus, our architect said the roofs have a couple of years left on it, right?
They still have some life left on it, that's why-
That's why we're delaying it too, right?
Correct. We don't really want to do it right away, as long as they're still functioning and okay and not leaking. Some of the stuff that has been already completed, fire sealed wall penetrations in multiple areas, installed new pool lights, adjusted door closers, installed several doors, closers in different areas, and electrical work has been going on nonstop with installing panic hardware, LED exit signs, and putting in GF CI outlets all over the building.
Were there any questions submitted on this, Scott?
No.
I think one other thing, and I'm not sure what page it was on, that Joel mentioned is with some of the work that was done on the drainage, et cetera, we aren't getting water in the basement like we used to.
We are not getting water currently in the basement. We, with, with the plumbing work that is being done by Burns, because they're the company that went through and did a lot of the work with the renovation, they're down there doing exploratory work. We're hitting it when it, when it comes in with the water. They got cammering going on, so they're addressing it. Don't know if we're going to continue to have to keep doing it, but like you said, as of right now, we are not receiving any water coming into the basement.
Just talking about that, throwing this out of the blue at you, the Village of Riverside's talking about putting a burn on one side of the river, and there's concern that that will displace the water to come onto the west side. Have you had any involvement with seeing what the Army Corps of Engineers' plan is and to see how they're going to address where that, all that excess water's going to go?
No, I have not.
So that we don't flood?
I have not, but that will be something that will be on the radar now, as we move forward, definitely to-
Well, I would think you, you need to, because I think the Village is, is bringing that up pretty soon on their scenario. And then maybe you need to see that, that maybe they'll throw an indemnification clause in insurance, so it's sure that-
Who, the Army Corps of Engineers?
You know, if it winds up being that we flood it, you know.
Just look into it, Scott.
Look into it, thank you.
But then the last thing in the Chief Financial's report is the quarterly business review done by Airmark. In this, in this report, you'll see who our Airmark staff is. You'll also see in there all the work orders that are being complete, all the inspections that are being done. And it also goes over timelines with summer projects. During the summer is the busy time for the custodial staff and the maintenance staff tidying up the building, cleaning classrooms, lockers, doing the floors, painting areas, so you'll see all that in there. And then you'll also see how they're addressing that Life Safety Amendment twenty-two.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Discussion, information items?
There are no updates on, we have one for you, and this was a second request, and the first request we sent him had over fifteen hundred pages. And then we told him that he needed to match that stuff up with the items that are on, listed in our boards, board bills on the webpage. Our current DCR software does not run the altered report that he is looking for, and so we sent them back. Plus, it is a commercial request, which under FOIA rules, we're not required to have to do, to respond to some of those items. So, I think we have responded more than enough to that request. There are no updates on police radios at this time.
All right. On what page?
Consent.
Additional discussion items? I'll look to my right first, any things you want to bring on, to my left?
Nope.
All right, the consent agenda, action items. Approval minutes?
Resolved Board Education Township High School District, two-way Cook County, Illinois. Everybody takes a fine action on the list of consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on May eight and May twenty-two, twenty eighteen, open and closed. Approves Illinois Association of School Boards' annual dues invoice for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year in the month of six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars as presented and amended in the June twelve, twenty-eight board agenda packet.
Second.
Before we vote, I have one question to ask our secretary. Did we have to make one additional edit on the one minutes?
It's for May.
For May, the open, right? You had to strike the reference to seven o'clock after Dave Mannan's name? Okay.
All right, vote for the vote.
Mr. Esco?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. We have Illinois Association of School Boards' annual dues.
That was part of the-
Don't worry about it, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. Don't we have to-
Did you want to talk about that?
Did you already, did you read that out?
It was part of the consent agenda, so they already approved it.
Yeah.
It just was in here as an additional, uh-
Did you read that in there?
He did.
You did? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, we can go to the old business, Life Safety Amendment capital improvements?
Uh, no updates that was provided in Chief, more than that was provided in the Chief Financial report.
All right, tentative budget.
So, Scott will go through this. He highlighted in green anything that changed from May. Plus, you will see that the May actual is now render, so there's one more month of actuals. The budget has, the deficit projection has increased roughly by about a hundred and sixty thousand, and, or a hundred and eighty thousand, is that correct, Scott? Roughly, we were at one-twenty and now we're projecting around three hundred?
Three hundred and three.
A hundred and sixty thousand, and that was incoming students who are between, for a special ed, outplace tuition. And so, it's not a cost that really can be addressed by any measures. It's a cost that we have to assume. And so, we received all the files this, this month coming over from our future schools. That being said, we do, just to, you know, prepare the board, we still have the property taxes at ninety-nine percent, so if the property taxes come in at a hundred percent, that hundred and eighty thousand deficit increase should be offset by one additional percent of property taxes, which would get us to a projected number of one-twenty.
Originally.
Original projection of one-twenty.
Because now we've just got to talk about the three hundred and one.
Right. And, go ahead, Scott.
Okay. If we look at the assumptions on the expenditure side, items that were changed, THIS, I got the TRS-
One-nineteen, ma'am.
I got our TRS statement stating exactly what the rate increase was going to be on, on that.
Why don't you, people listening don't know what THIS and TRS are.
It's, it's the board share for the-
Teachers retirement system pension, right.
Teachers retirement system, and they set the rates on it. I have looked at the historical on that particular line item. It is under budget currently, and with the increase to point nine-two percent, and based off of our actual salaries for TRS employees, it needs to be increased, so that it's not under budget on it. The increase on that is roughly fifteen thousand, I believe, to move that up.
That's not in the assumptions.
It's not in the assumptions, but it's in the overall expenditure side.
So, on the assumptions on one-nineteen, though, let's stay in order.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just so that they can go, on one-nineteen, the two that you highlighted are the two changes.
Yes, the two that I have highlighted is the out-of-district tuition. After going through, like Dr. Skinkis said, the placements of the incoming freshmen, the one million eighty is way more in line than what the original projection of nine-twenty-two was for the out-of-district tuition. Currently, the expenditures for our FY eighteen, I looked at June's invoices on it, were roughly about one million fifty-seven on that, currently where we're standing at. Going through with our special ed director, we believe that one, the one million eighty is a much better figure to capture all the costs for our out-of-district tuition. I did double-check with Ladsy on our purchase service. I know I had originally at five-oh-five. I think five-fifteen is probably more in line as you get the reconciliation and there's rate changes for the services. That gives a little bit of cushion to, to take into effect that there is any salary increase or benefit increase that they pass off onto the districts with it, so I put that back up an additional ten thousand to five-fifteen with an increase of ten thousand to that particular line item. It's a tough one to, to predict on that. I do get preliminary information from the business manager at Ladsy, but it doesn't take into effect any type of cost increase or rate changes throughout the course of the year when they go through the reconciliation at the end of the year.
So, if the, the board reviewed through this, all your highlights that are in a light green highlight, those are changes from the, from the May first draft, right? And you received a few questions on this?
Uh, yes. Let me get my questions out here, sorry. Questions that were received on Board Book Page one-thirty, under the crossing guard line item. This is a decrease from what was budgeted in eighteen to nineteen. Part of eighteen, we budgeted in our safety liaison's officers' salary into this line item. In FY nineteen, I'm moving that salary under the Assistant Principal of Student Affairs to be in line with what all our other security officers are being paid, which is the non-certified salaries. So, you will see an increase under the non-certified salaries under the Assistant Principal of Student Affairs.
We are going to have a crossing guard that we have to pay.
We do have crossing guards.
That's going to be around five thousand dollars.
On First, on First Avenue, we left five thousand in there if we get billed by Riverside.
When we get billed. Okay. And the other green question mark, you had the one-oh-five, was there was a question on above that? Or that's the board share you highlighted?
That was the highlight of the THIS, that was the increase to be more in line with our salaries from our staff that partakes in TRS. On Board Book Page one-thirty-two, under organizational sponsors, there is an increase from eighteen to nineteen. What happened here is I didn't account for the Assistant Auditorium Manager in eighteen. Throughout the beginning of the year, it was a vacant position, and it ran midway through until we got an actual assistant to do it. So, I totally, that was a budget oversight on my part for that. It is accounted for in FY nineteen, the true cost that has every position captured.
Okay, next.
On Board Book Page one-thirty-two, under life skills, under the Special Ed Department, the FY nineteen budget reflects three paraprofessionals compared to the preliminary budget of FY eighteen, which had four. So, there is a decrease in the cost there.
Okay.
Uh, Board Book Page one-thirty-three-
Flip that answer the other way, though. We only incurred, we, our amended budget was seventy-five thousand. Or, I mean, our, our budget's seventy-five thousand, but we only incurred forty-one thousand through May, June and July. I mean, we're going to, are we going to incur thirty thousand more in two months?
Um, that's something I got to look at with it.
Okay, so you're kind of looking at it from, because if you reduce it-
We still have four payrolls that still have to come out.
You're going to be, there's four payrolls, but-
But it shouldn't come out.
It's, that'd be thirty thousand versus forty-one for twenty-two payrolls or whatever. It still seems like it's a little off.
It's low, it seems low.
Or, no, it seems high compared to the actual.
The budget seems high to the actual.
Yeah, the actual seems low compared to the budget.
Yeah, the actual seems low compared to the budget.
See when we filled those positions and when, if they were paid throughout the whole year or not, okay?
Yes.
All right.
On Board Book Page one-thirty-three, Special Education Idea Grant, there's a thirty-five thousand dollar allotment that was put into the budget as preliminary, as we use those funds to pay for a paraprofessional in it. Instead of doing that, what we are doing now, moving forward, is that money goes towards offsetting our Ladsy purchase service costs. So, the idea funds are used upfront to offset the overall cost of the Ladsy, the Ladsy purchase service. The only item in our idea grant is five percent of the funds for professional development, which is roughly, I think it's sixty-seven hundred dollars, that you set aside for special education professional development with our idea grant, and so that's why it's zeroed out for the thirty-five thousand. Board Book Page one-thirty-three, under Title One, Paid Services, the tentative FY nineteen budget has allotted the cost for our HERO student management system, which is roughly ninety-five hundred dollars in it, so that's with our tentative accounts that we're going to use to pay different things with Title One. That particular one is ninety-five hundred for the HERO system.
But we budgeted twenty-six thousand this year, and we haven't charged anything against it yet. Is there a reason?
Um, and I, with, with this too, I, I, I know that the accounts are all over the place with it. I have to double-check with it. I, I understand, it looks off with it, but I'm sure there's an account that is-
Okay.
Over in Title One, and it's really hard to predict as you amend throughout the course of the year what your items are going to be using your Title One dollars.
One-thirty-four, did you have any? What was your next question?
Um, the next questions were Board Book Page one-forty, under the Board of Education. We do have one retiree, and we have a ten thousand dollar stipend, or not a stipend, but a 403B payment built in for that. That was an individual-
Okay.
Retirement contract, worked with the board and that employee.
I want to ask a related question, not for today, but for, the Illinois Association of School Boards sent us a notice that, I don't remember if it was passed, I think it was, that the penalty for providing additional pay to teach in the last four years kicks in if it's over three percent now instead of six.
Unless you had a contract that grandfathered a six.
Yes, it goes until your next contract.
I understand that, but we are going to be budgeting and talking about budgeting under the current contract, but negotiating, so with that statute, if we give raises over three percent, are we automatically going to set ourselves to incur a penalty?
Our, our retirement incentive in our current contract, it is sunset language, is set for three percent, and then the bonuses are given after. The only place where it would become an issue in the next contract that we would have to look at is that our retirement language says that we will provide a three percent salary increase, and we allow the teachers to do extra duty-
Right.
Stipends or supervision or things that could get them closer to the six.
Right.
So, what we would have to discuss is if, since we approved that sunset language and that language in this current contract, does that grandfather send to the end of that sunset language, or do we have to adjust that language in the next contract?
Well, the, the raises themselves, right, were, were protected, I mean, we're not doing-
Correct.
For the current contract, for the next budget here.
Right, the current contract, yeah. And, and I thought they still have the ability to do stipends.
Under the current?
No, I thought under the, the new.
So, under the new, what would happen is if, if somebody was in their retirement-
But if they were-
And we already accounted for a three percent salary increase, and now you added out a five thousand dollar stipend, right? We're okay, we have a year-
Yeah, we have a contract that, anyways.
As long as your contract is currently with it, yeah, and it's based off of credible earnings.
Correct. So, the only thing that we have to look into is sunset language in future contracts.
Uh, under the same Board of Education, Professional Services, this was increased to account for- mentor for the new Assistant Principal of Athletics. On Board Book page one forty-one, under Fiscal Services, under Audit Services, this was increased to account for a new accounting rule that's out there to, per GAZB seventy-five, I won't get into it, just know that we have to have a full evaluation done with an actuarial report on other post-retirement.
Thirty-five hundred dollars for that service?
Thirty-five hundred for that.
That's a good way to summarize it.
It's a twenty-five percent increase in our audit services, though, for one actuarial report?
Yes.
What do we administer post-retirement?
Medical. There's people on with medical, receiving medical benefits from previous contracts.
Two thousand eight contract, correct?
Yes. On Board Book page one forty-two, under the Technology Department, what I did here is I split the Technology Director to make it easier to track what the admin salaries are. It is an assumption, so it's a lot easier to just put that in and bill it in so I can filter by admin salaries. And that's right above the line item that is highlighted. You'll see the directors there. And then the non-certified one takes into account the raise and the, for the Assistant Technology Director.
Okay, what other ones did you have?
Under Technology Paid Service, the reason that the decrease on that one is we moved our backup internet into the Operations and Maintenance account that will capture all costs associated with the phone and the internet. So you'll see the decrease there, increase in the ONN. There was no further questions submitted on the tentative budget.
So I have a question.
There were no further questions submitted?
There was a whole group of people that came here today. What year is that potentially going to hit?
If it goes with approval in July, we'll have to bill it into this FY nineteen budget. So we'll have to bill in the coaches, increase the transportation, everything that is associated with the equipment cost.
Another twenty thousand.
We go to three hundred and twenty-three thousand deficit.
Yes.
But that would be, if the board were to take action on it in July or August, it would be adjusted into September, which is the official budget that the board approves.
Would we have to go through a re-notice period?
No.
No.
No, this is just putting it on public display, available for the public to do. When it comes time to approve the September budget, we'll have the public notice out there with the public hearing.
I have a question. On Board Book one twenty-two, it states that the Board of Education is restricting two million eight hundred thousand dollars in working cash fund. I thought it was three million.
Two hundred thousand we put in the current budget, so if there's any work or investigatory work that we need to do, we have a budget to pull.
We voted in a couple of meetings.
I don't remember now why we ask these questions.
Any other questions?
Got a resolution to approve of.
Somebody want to read a resolution? Yep.
You resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District, two zero eight Cook County, Illinois, hereby approve and adopt the budget containing estimates of amounts available in each fund as a tentative budget for the said school district for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and be a further resolved that this tentative budget following adoption by this Board of Education shall be made conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least thirty days prior to the final adoption thereof at the September eleventh, two thousand eighteen Board Meeting.
Second.
Go for the vote.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Mr. Smithin?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Yes. New business? Name of bills?
Scott, you had some questions on that? Do you want to read the resolution first or have to go through the questions?
Two questions were submitted.
Okay, go ahead.
Board Book page one fifty-six, Lacrosse, Ian Pearson. The Lacrosse Board of Directors elected to give the coaches compensation using the funds that were donated to the program.
So we use this as a pass-through to make sure that.
I have a significant problem with the way this is being presented. You, the administration presented the board that we would hire, that person's a voluntary coach, right? And we also do share obligation of the expense funds that, like Gary talked about, that go into the, what's the report you gave us with the impressed account items or the?
The tracklist things and the.
Yeah, no, the.
Activity account.
Activity account. So this money would have had to go either into our funds or the activity account, right?
Yes.
We're actually paying this coach, right? Were we taking a donation from them, which the board has to approve certain amounts, but this is under the amount the superintendent can approve? But we're using it to pay somebody that we were approached to as hiring as a volunteer. So I think if we're changing the status of people, it should be brought to the board's attention. This was a volunteer coach, but somebody was offering to make a donation, make them a paid position, so that people know that.
I think you brought up the same thing last year.
Well, I'm consistent, then, I like that.
And I think the board, last year, the same thing, we discussed that at least, instead of the lacrosse club or lacrosse parents just paying somebody cash by running it through our accounts, at least we're accounting for tax purposes and.
I'm going to vote for this, but I guess, last year, I think it should be pointed out. We should basically change the status.
At the end of the year.
Of a player by taking a donation and we're paying, right?
Some compensation.
I mean, do we incur any additional liability? When we pay stipends to our teachers, do you take taxes out of those?
Uh, yes.
Do we take a tax out of this?
Yes.
Okay, so then they're our employee then too, right? So it's our paid employee which could create additional liability than if they're just a volunteer, right? That's why I think it should be just pointed out. I'm not offended by it. I think it's nice that the lacrosse group had the confidence in the person who was well spoken tonight, was willing to do it for free and they were able to give him some compensation for his time. But I think because of the rules and what the board has to approve, the board should always be told when you're changing the status from a volunteer to a paid. To me, it doesn't matter where the money comes from because it has to run through our funds, right, one of our accounts. And you also can't tell by looking at this report that somebody donated the money to us to pay for it. It looks like we're paying somebody out of our funds that we didn't know about, right?
Yes, on that report, yes. And then the second question submitted was Board Book page one sixty-seven, under Jim Ross. This was the vendor that was used for the sound system during our graduation commencement.
And Kevin mentioned it to us that they, we rent the system from him or something?
Yes.
Because that new system we put's not good enough for that.
Krista, why don't you address that?
I mean, it's one of the biggest expenses we have for graduation now, it's the sound system.
It is.
Yeah, we have other, several expenses that are over a thousand dollars for graduation as well, but we're looking into other vendors, but Alan, who installed that sound system, said at minimum we would need a mixer for graduation due to the number of people that are in there and the different lines that are going out for the different mics and things of that nature.
Okay.
And the board, the reason we're looking at different vendors is because I was telling the board to feed back on the stage. But that's because there's no sound panels or anything on the back of the gym, so it's just bouncing back and forth. We had no complaints from anybody in the audience.
No, that's just on stage and I don't think we're going to be able to get rid of that.
Hey.
Okay. Someone want to read the rest?
board of education township high school district two eight cook county, Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the June twelve, twenty eighteen board agenda packet.
Take a second?
Second.
Go for the vote.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Mr. Smithin?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right. Go to prevailing rate of wage resolution?
So we have to do this annually. We split the costs with District Ninety-Six. There was a question submitted what the highlights were, I think the way the PDF sent over. But basically, anything that was highlighted are the wage changes that we received from the county.
Thank you. Resolve board education township high school district two eight cook county, Illinois hereby approves the resolution regarding prevailing rate of wages included and is presented in the June twelve, twenty eighteen board agenda packet.
Second.
Can you go for the vote?
Mr. Smithin?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, approval of interest transfer?
Scott, backroom.
Annually, the board transfers the debt service interest earned to the Ed Fund. The Ed Fund is our largest fund that we have and is in the most need. We're looking to just get the approval to transfer our current interest. It was twenty-six thousand, five thirty-four and seventy-five cents.
Resolve the board education township high school district two eight cook county, Illinois hereby approves the transfer of interest earnings in the debt, from the debt service fund to the education fund as presented in the June twelve, twenty eighteen board agenda packet.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Mr. Smithin?
Yes.
Yes. All right, faculties use agreement?
Facilities.
Facilities, I'm sorry.
We met with the facility council when we went over the life safety summer work. We do this every June, just so that July one, we can post a new agreement online and use that for a year. If you see on their background, there's a summary of the four changes. I mean, we've been doing this now for seven years, so we just tweak with costs and things we feel that are getting overly used and we need to address wear and tear. Or if we cited an oversight, like with the pricing for snowplow and salt surcharge. So those highlights are provided for you and the page numbers are listed. We did not receive any questions on this, so we're requesting board approval so we can put this into effect July one.
Resolve board education township high school district two eight cook county, Illinois hereby approves the revised facilities use agreement, which will be effective July one, twenty eighteen, as presented in the June twelve, twenty eighteen board agenda packet.
Second.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Mr. Smithin?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, intergovernmental agreement?
Again, this is an annual practice by the board, so in June, we approved the fee. Now, this is, and so this year, we use the, we always try to reserve at least some seats, but also we want the board to approve the tuition. So if we need to send a student to the alternative school provided by West Cook, we can use it. So I'd ask that you approve this so that we have the ability. I think we used it twice this year for two different students.
Resolve this board education township high school district two eight cook county, Illinois hereby approves the intergovernmental agreement fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, between West Forty and School District two eight for the purpose of placing students into the West Forty Regional Safe Schools Program if the need arises, which the tuition of one hundred and twenty dollars per day, with the tuition of one hundred and twenty dollars today, per day, as presented in the June twelve, twenty eighteen board agenda packet.
Second.
So we went from one fifteen to one twenty?
Correct.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Mr. Smithin?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. Press plus policy issue ninety-eight, first read?
So this is a first read, press plus ninety-eight. Policy council has not got together. There was a question submitted about the one, the board, the new policy six colon one thirty-five. We currently do not have it. I have a question into our legal counsel to see if that were required to adopt it because we are ready to offer a debt advance placement and we already provide seventh and eighth graders from our feeder schools if they qualify to take math courses here above grade level. So I know it sounded like a lot of that language applied more to elementary and students that can maybe go to grades at a faster pace, but I wanted our legal counsel to advise us on that. I also think because there is some discussion between the legal counsel and the group that represents the School Board Association, asking for clarification. I think we'll be okay with the timeline if we approve it in July.
But the reason that I raised the question is according to the summary of the statute.
It's a July one.
Says we have to adopt it by July one.
Right.
But even if we didn't, it doesn't affect anybody.
I don't, correct.
Place people between July one and our next board meeting.
Correct, that's why our legal counsel felt we had time, as long as we had it in place before the school year.
Okay.
So we'll have, we'll try to maybe do the policy council before July meeting so that we can have a recommendation for it.
There's not much otherwise.
Other was not.
All right, we'll go to matters for closed session. Personnel, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable, imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiation, school safety, confidentiality of closed session minutes. This gives an opportunity for a second go on visitor statements. Left, right, seeing nobody here, we will move on. We did not have any discussion items, so we will.
Motion for closed.
Move consideration of items, no? Do we have any consideration of items for future meetings?
No.
To my left, am I right? No?
Resolve the board education township high school district two eight cook county, Illinois and just close session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees to the public body or legal counsel to the public body, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable, imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiation, school safety and confidentiality of closed session minutes.
Second.
Ms. Seero? Yes, sorry, it's bad.
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. All right, see you guys down there and let's get there soon or after.